Good, it's a good thing.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
No.
I left him at the house. Yeah, they're all good. Oh, yeah, drinks and everything. They want to be 406. Hey.
Hey Doug, how's it going?
I'm gonna let it slide another minute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's texting us.
Okay, thank you.
Ninety percent.
All right, we're all ready? Good evening and welcome to tonight's Town Council Workshop for December 9th, 2025. First up is the Public Hearing on Code Amendments, Chapter 20, Land Use. I guess I am going to call this public hearing open. And it does not appear that we have anybody that has signed up to speak. Got one came in of in time. The person's in favor of the amendment and small lot development in general.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor, it might be nice to have Mr. Eller come just to introduce it so that the audience can can know what we're talking about and let you know that it was properly advertised.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you, James.
Good evening, Council. For the previous few months... For the previous few months, the Planning Board and staff have been crafting several text amendments that are before you this evening for consideration. The First Amendment is for legal compliance with newly enacted legislative changes. These include changes to vested rights, the elimination of waiting periods for between development requests, minimum street standards, special use permits, and the display of governmental flags. We say legal compliance here because this is new state statute and we are obligated to comply. Those amendments have been made to your land use regulations and are available for your review this evening. The Second Recommendation is for a technical amendment to clarify regulations concerning certain signage in residential districts. And the Third and Fourth Recommendations involve the creation of two new residential districts, both of which provide for single-family residential development on smaller lots. That's the one comment that Mr. Frew was referring to just a moment ago. As brief as I can possibly be, the proposed R6 district would allow up to six units per acre with 75-foot minimum lot widths and setbacks of 30 in the front and 10 on the sides and rear. The R10 district will allow up to 10 units per acre with a minimum lot width of 50 feet and setbacks of 30 in the front, 10 on the rear, and 6 on the sides. Now, these newly residential districts or new residential districts were taken up as a way to potentially avoid conditional district zoning for residential projects that are seeking smaller lot sizes. They could also provide more consistent treatment among lots with downtown area, given that many lots are able to build on smaller lots under current nonconforming lot provisions. If these districts are adopted, they're not automatically applied to any land in town tonight. These districts will only be applied in the way of a zoning map amendment that would both go before your Planning Board for recommendation and in longer to the Governing Board for ultimate approval. A few of the items that are included in your packet of information this evening are the public hearing of this notice that we're having this evening and the Planning Board recommendation on each of these four described items. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have at this time or during action and discussion, whatever is the pleasure of the board.
I have a question. Could an R6 be granted right in the middle of an R1 neighborhood?
The short answer to your question is yes, and that would go for any zoning district. It's a hypothetical situation, but let's imagine a scenario where the owner of 18 Highland Street petitions to town to rezone their property to I-1. There's nothing that I believe staff or the board can do to outwardly reject that application, but you would be entitled to due process and that trip to the Planning Board for recommendation and a public hearing substantially similar to one you're having tonight.
And I guess the reason that I had a dilemma with that is because when you read the definitions, sometimes it says, like, for example, R1, Highlands is R1.
Yes.
Is a primary residential district. And then it goes on to say, "In order to protect the existing residential developments and promote a suitable environment for residential life."
Sure.
So, let's say where Highlands meets Salem, that is, has been available for a very long time. I don't know how many acres are there.
Which corner?
The house that is, is not at the very corner, but the right next to it.
I'm afraid I can't quote the acres off the top of my head, but I would guess around one, just judging from hopefully some awareness of the area.
Okay. Well, there's a house and there's land behind it, so let's go with two acres. So, we could put 12 houses in that little area on Highlands in between a lot of R1s that have existed for 40 years. We could if it got approved.
Should the zoning map amendment be approved by a Town Council?
Just needed to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we're ready to close this public hearing. All right. Mr. Eller, you are up again to talk about Code Amendments, Chapter 20, Legal Compliance and Residential Signage Act.
For this action item, and I say it that way because I do believe staff is asking for action on these two items this evening. The first, again, is legal compliance with recently enacted state statute. We, to put it bluntly, we don't, we don't have a choice here. We have some obligation to be compliant with state law. The second is like a three-word amendment, if I remember correctly, related to signage in residential districts. This almost never comes up, but when it does, you know, it's been staff's practice to bring forth these text amendments to the Planning Board for their recommendation. In short, there is one use that is permitted by right in residential districts that would also not require, if you were the business owner or the property owner, you would want signage, and that is a bed and breakfast. The way the ordinance currently reads, it doesn't allow for signage for allowable uses, but it does allow signage for pre-existing nonconforming uses. It was my belief that that probably was an oversight at some point in our many and several iterations of the sign ordinance and thought it'd be a good idea to get that corrected in the event that it comes up. Staff has some language to rely upon in those situations.
You do have an ordinance that has been drafted to accomplish the legally, legally required amendments and then this other residential signage matter that begins at page 40 of your packet.
So, the action required would just be to adopt this language change in Chapter 20?
Yes, that's, that's what's being requested.
Does anybody want to, I'm assuming we're gonna make a motion? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, Code Amendment, Chapter 20, New Residential Districts.
So, we put this on the agenda as discussion and possible direction. That being said, you have the two recommendations from the Planning Board. One was unanimous for the R6 zoning district. The R10 zoning district was debated a little ahead of here, and that is reflected in the recommendation provided as well. I do not pretend to be qualified to get involved in the philosophical conversation about whether or not these densities are good or those densities are good. This is the second time in five or six years that staff has at least approached this from the angle of procedure, and that is going back even to the days of special use permits and what is now being used as conditional districts. There exists a scenario to sort of do some of these in advance. And not just potentially, but I believe it is likely to decrease the number of conditional district requests that we receive specifically for residential projects that cannot be minimum lot areas or other dimensional standards.
I'm assuming that 10 acre, 10 units per acre is gonna basically mean an apartment?
The way that these districts have been designed is specifically for single families, so I wouldn't necessarily call it an apartment or even condos. These would accommodate detached, single-family units, but on smaller lots than would otherwise be allowed currently by the town's semi-code.
Could be like lily farms, but more.
So, it appears the source of consternation on R10 was the six-foot side setback and fire safety. Is, can you elaborate on any of that? I'm reading the letter from the Planning Board.
Sure.
Describing that disagreement.
There, that issue was raised at the Planning Board level. When we have these close votes, it's been the practice of Assistant Manager Jackson and I to make sure that some of those dissenting opinions are pretty, you know, clear in the recommendation. That specific concern, if I remember correctly, was whether or not six feet was too close to be suitable for our fire department. While I don't have the fire code memorized, it's my understanding that all development has to meet the fire code, whether those walls are 20 feet apart or in the case of an apartment complex, quite literally touching each other.
So, the code resolves that issue. Is that fair to say?
It is my belief and understanding that the fire code is applicable here regardless of any setbacks that we may think are a good idea or a bad idea.
Okay.
What if it's a, a, what if somebody comes in and asks for R10 on the Main Street? And the land is butted up against the Main Street? You, so if you built 10 per acre, would you have 10 driveways going straight into Main Street? I'm just hypothetically asking, or would, it would be just whatever the developer decided?
Let me change your question just a little bit, if I may, simply because the Main Street frontage would mean that your driveway connection permits would go to DOT rather than the town. If we take that same piece of property and give it frontage on Church Street, now that flows to the town rather than the state. We would absolutely, while I don't think we can require, I think it would be strongly encouraged that, let's imagine the main entrance to Weaver Village, but without the other little side things, that we would have the ability, because they're gonna connect to a town road, to limit their driveway capacity. Or like the minor subdivision at the top of Lake Shore Drive, where they have one common driveway that goes down the hill that serves all four houses internally. I think that we would have the capacity to steer things in that direction. And before the thought leaves me forever, my apologies, it's my understanding that DOT as well has some driveway access standards. They will only allow so many so close together. I know that exists, but I would rather tell you that I don't know precisely what that number is. I don't.
I wonder if there's a way to graphically provide us with some examples of how something might be configured on a hypothetical lot, just so that we can visualize it.
I'm happy to provide that illustration if it, if it's material of this conversation, whether it be now or in the future date, if that's what's determined. I can tell you that as a general rule, it's been my experience that we have these theoretical maximums, but they don't take into account topography, they don't take into account blue line streams, they don't take into account right of ways, they don't take into account new roads that may have to be built to access the interior of the property. If you hit 50%, you're generally doing a really good job.
It, it just seems really tight, but mathematically, I know it works.
Yeah. Yeah, sometimes things work on math, but they don't look good when you see them. And that's one of the problems we had over on Wheeler Road, is how close and tight and little. I know with the DOT, one of the things that I've been told about North Main and South Main is that South Main is thickly settled, and that's one of the reasons. And there's a lot of driveways that come out into South Main, which is why the speed limit's 10 miles an hour less than it is on North Main, because less driveways come straight out. There's more, like Wildwood, you go up Wildwood and you have 30 homes.
Right.
Versus 30 different driveways coming into Main Street.
I'd like to add one more thing, if you'll allow it, and I believe it was a portion of the public comment that you received this evening, and it certainly was a popular topic of conversation at the Planning Board level, and that was the 30-foot front yard setback. The reason that is kind of holding despite the fact that we're at least exploring the possibility of smaller lot sizes is your standard parking space is nine feet wide and 18 feet long. Without also considering the possibility of allowing on-street parking, it's probably not a good idea to reduce that front yard setback to a space that would be too small to house a vehicle. That's where we landed. Maybe that's right, maybe that's wrong, but that was the thinking behind it.
Well, I was up Critter Trail the other day, and I was impressed with everybody had pulled into their driveway.
Another reason for that is it's pretty common, especially in these smaller lot developments that have achieved some combination of a special use permit or a conditional district. They'll fill up their garage with stuff, and they'll park two cars in the driveway, and maybe the high school kid is out on the road. Pretty much the first thing that happens.
Well, I think the 30-foot setback makes sense, especially with utility right of ways and road center lines and sidewalks. So, very good. Does anybody have any direction at this point for James? All right, I guess we're finished with that. We'll move on to the fire engine replacement. Chief Davis, tell us about that?
There's recommended motion.
Yeah, before we do that, we just want, wondered, so, so what is the direction? Do you want to have this come back to you? Do you want to, we'll, I know Mr. Eller was asked to provide some, some diagrams on what this might look like, so I think the direction then is to put it back on, onto Council's agenda in the, in the future, understanding that it'll be a different configuration of Council. Is that the direction?
I think a continuation of this discussion would be great.
Okay, any time, timeframe that you wanna?
Wherever it fits in the next.
Okay.
Month or two.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for prompting me.
Good evening, Council. Hope everybody's doing okay this evening. It's a pleasure to be with you here this evening and ask for a little bit of money. As you, as you know, I don't know if I can expand a whole lot more than what we said in previous meetings, other than we had an incident with the fire truck, as you, as you know. That's kind of forced us into operating on a knife edge when it comes to an engine. There's, as you can imagine, these are complex pieces of machinery. There's things that go wrong with them on a fairly regular basis, and these, some type of care and maintenance. With this purchase, though, it kind of, it enables us to get on a better footing whenever it comes to the tremendous growth that we've experienced over the last several years. And it also puts us on a trajectory, at least with fire engines, not including other apparatus, to better address future growth as well. I know it came up pretty much in a hurry with this, but one, so we were down to one engine that's, again, we're kind of limping by with it. But it enables us to get a timeline down from several years to, as you can see, it's about five, six months right now for a timeline. That's enabled because we can get in on the manufacturer's process earlier, and although the last truck we ordered is a custom truck, in other words, the size of the pump, the size of the tank, things like that. The closer you can order this, and they have a certain percentage, a small percentage, because they understand that there's gonna be people that need to be bumped up in the order. As such, if the earlier we get involved in this process, the more it will be Weaverville's truck with Weaverville's needs and not just a generic truck. So, I don't know what questions you might have of that. Just, again, this puts us on a much better footing whenever it comes to future growth as it relates to fire engines.
I spoke with Town Manager Harris this past week, or last week, and had some questions for him, and one of the things that I think is worthwhile noting is the insurance policy we had on the previous engine just took the regular insurance. So, what happened was the price of the engine was like a fraction, like 200 and some thousand compared over a million. And I think in the future, he indicated that they would go the direction of getting replacement. You don't have to worry about depreciation if it costs a million dollars and it's now worth a million and a half.
Correct.
You don't have to replace it. So, that's one of the things that's important. The other thing I would point out is the fact that, I think most people know, we take care of the North Monkin Fire District. And if you take that into account, it's roughly about five times the population of the town of Weaverville. And if you don't have that piece of equipment to handle it, then that's gonna have effect on your rating and also will possibly affect what funds we do get for covering that area. And, well, the other last thing is, as you point out, to give a new fire engine from start, you're talking four years.
Four years.
So, you know, the fact that this just happened to come, we can get it maybe in four or five months, that's kind of guard sense. I would be very much in favor of taking advantage of this. We were just caught with a situation that wasn't it, but we, we're gonna plan for that in the future, so we won't get short on it.
That's correct, and that's a great observation. And also, when it comes to the fire rating, we are due, as you know, that for a fire rerate for the whole district here in February, it's critical that we get this in place, at least whenever we have the rerate, we won't have to have something of a lesser capacity or not have that in there, because I don't know what that would do to our rating. I'm sure it would negatively impact it if we were not to have this.
And the time of delivery, is that still a couple months out?
It, it is. It's, it's about six months is my understanding for this awareness, yes.
Is there an option to, option off the old fire truck or part it out and recruit some monies?
We have the $232,000 with the insurance coverage. There's no salvage title as far as I know. We stripped it of usable equipment, and as far as I know, that once I send an email to Tanya, then at that point, I don't know who would want it actually.
Yeah. I actually asked Scotty that, and I said, "Can we get a salvage title or something?" He said, "We've stripped it bare. It's metal." You know, that's, it's a doorstop now. And it was totally lost, and also, as Doug pointed out, I was asking about the amount of insurance funds coming in, and he said, you know, "This truck was at the end of its life." It was, what was it?
Two thousand?
It was 2009, I think. It's 16 years old.
Wow.
Good God. And that it was purchased for $330,000. So, actually, this is not that bad. It's just unfortunate that prices have come to a halt.
Sure.
In 15 years. So, I don't really think we have much of a choice here. We need to do.
I don't see how we have a choice, to be quite honest with you. Kind of made the joke, "Well, if something else goes wrong, I guess I have a pickup. I can pick you guys up in that." Or we can use a ladder truck. It's one extreme or the other with that, but.
I have a special fake for this. Listen to that.
Did you push a button to make that happen?
This one right here.
I think we should move forward with this. Let's vote on it.
Yeah, so we're gonna take a vote on this, right? Yeah.
I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and proceed with it, take advantage of the situation, in fact, of the time, time factor, and also the fact of our rating, not having one in place. So, I'm pretty much in favor of it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. We are now going to recognize our outgoing mayor and other Town Council members. Patrick is not here tonight, however, I'll go ahead and recognize him, and we'll also do this again on Monday next week when he is present, so. Certificate of recognition, recognition in service of the town of Weaverville presented to Patrick Fitzsimmons. Having served the town of Weaverville since 2015, Mayor Fitzsimmons has demonstrated exceptional leadership, guidance, and commitment to residents of Weaverville and its neighboring communities. Awarded the Charles H. Campbell Regional Leadership Award in 2025 by Land of Sky Regional Council and serving as past chairman of the Land of Sky Regional Council Board of Delegates, Mayor Fitzsimmons has exercised sound governance throughout his tenure and has exemplified civic responsibility and steadfast dedication to the town's well-being for the, for future generations. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
I have, I have one more. You might want to go next, and then I'll go again.
Okay. I can go next. I suppose just go down the road, but Doug, before I just read this, I just want to say, ever since that night at your Christmas dinner two years ago, I have so appreciated your help. I kind of view you as a, as a bit of a mentor. Since I came on this council, you've really kind of given me some guidance, and I, I very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
But I'm here to also recognize you and your service. Presented to Doug Jackson, having served the town of Weaverville since 2007 as Vice Mayor and Council Member. Doug Jackson has demonstrated exceptional leadership, guidance, and commitment to the residents of Weaverville and its neighboring communities. Council Member Jackson devoted his time to the Patriotic Committee, WDAC, and the Main Street Nature Park Committee. Exercising sound governance throughout his tenure, Council Member Jackson has exemplified civic responsibility and steadfast dedication to the town's well-being for future generations. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
I'd like to go next, if I may. This is certificate of recognition is presented to Michelle Wood. Having served the town of Weaverville since 2021, Council Member Wood has demonstrated exceptional leadership, guidance, and commitment to the residents of Weaverville. As a strong advocate for residence issues, Council Member Wood volunteered and promoted the preservation of the Weaverville Hillside School and Community Center for its place in Black history in the Historic Register. Exercising sound governance throughout her tenure, Council Member Wood has exemplified civic responsibility and steadfast dedication to the town's well-being for future generations.
And last but not least, certificate of recognition for Catherine Cordell.
Thank you.
Council Member Cordell began her tenure serving in the Weaverville Planning Board in 2012. Since being elected to Town Council, Council Member Cordell has served as the town's French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization delegate. She has demonstrated exceptional leadership, guidance, and commitment to the residents of Weaverville and its neighboring communities. Exercising sound governance throughout her tenure, Council Member Cordell has exemplified civic responsibility and steadfast dedication to the town's well-being for future generations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know Scotty Harris would, if he were here, he would want to say some words, so I want to take that, that quick opportunity to do so as well. Again, Doug, you have been, been on this council since I began with the town and, and much longer, and have, I can only imagine how many patriotic events. We do three a year, so how many, how many of those you have, have provided great leadership to our, our community in doing that. And in, in recognition of that, wanted to present you with what was flown over the U.S. Capitol on Veterans Day last year.
Wow.
And before, before I get, before we get too far into speeches, if that's what's getting ready to happen, also, also wanted to offer to Councilmember Wood and Cordell our thanks, too. Y'all have, have made great contributions to your community and, and the leadership that you've provided on this town council. So, just a token, token of appreciation.
Thank you.
Well, looks like we're ready for a social gathering.
Absolutely.
Do we need, do we adjourn it and then do that, or, or does it matter?
Adjourn now.
All right. This workshop is adjourned.
You almost said it.
For the fastest?